I couldn't hear you.
The meeting is called to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please? Vice Chair Oquendo.
Here.
Member Rivera.
Here.
Member Carney.
Present.
Member Grigsby.
Present.
Member Bridle.
Present.
Member Wolfher.
Present.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. We need an approval of the minutes, and I guess we have two sets of minutes here. We go with the first one from August 17th. Did everybody have a chance to read that? Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes, thank you.
Motion passes five to zero.
The second one is for September 21st. Do we have a motion on that?
A motion.
I'll second it.
The motion has got to be clarified.
Motion to approve the minutes for September 21st, 2021.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes, thank you.
Five to zero.
Okay, our first case would be DRC case number 0008 slash 2021 dash 23. Future land use map amendment.
Actually, Ms. Holloway, the first case is annexation 21-00004, ordinance 2021 dash 21.
004. Okay, hold on a sec. Sorry about that. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Erin Sturck, Transportation Manager with Community Development Department. The first case that you have before you today is the Pine Grove Reserve voluntary annexation case. The subject property, it's, excuse me, it's ordinance number 2021 dash 2021. It's on a property 91.8 acres in size. It's north of US 192 and west of Pine Grove Road. The applicants are requesting voluntary ordinance annexation, and the subject property qualifies for annexation under Section 171.044 Florida statute. It's contiguous and reasonably compact, and there's a signed position from all the property owners to make the application. It's adjacent to the city limits on the western property boundary, and it has an existing future land use designation of low-density residential in the county and an existing zoning in the county of low-density residential as well. This request meets the strategic plan goals for growth management, and DRC and staff met honor before July 6, 2021, and recommend approval of ordinance 2021 dash 21. And likewise, we recommend that the planning commission, based on the 16 findings, recommend approval of ordinance 2021 dash 2021. If you would like, you can read the other two items into the record if you wish to discuss all three of them together, or you all can move forward with a request for just this item.
Okay, let me read the other ones, too. Let me go to this sheet. I got them right here. Okay, this would be case number 2021 dash 23, the future land use map amendment, and it's CPA 21 dash 00008. And also ordinance number 2021-24, Pine Grove Park, PUD plant unit development zoning map amendment.
DRC.
DRC case PUD 21 dash 00003.
Thank you. So I'll just move into the next two. The next item before you is the Pine Grove Reserve Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment as it exceeds 50 acres. Of course, you remember it's 91.8 acres in size, and you know where it's at. And the request is for approval of ordinance number 2021 dash 23. Again, the future land use designation in the county is low-density residential. That allows for three to eight dwelling units per acre in the county, but they're proposing the same land use designation now that they are proposing to be in city limits, but that only allows for one to four dwelling units per acre. The development proposed is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts on city facilities. It meets the strategic plan goal of growth management, and staff and DRC met on July 6, 2021, and recommend approval of ordinance 2021 dash 23. And likewise, we recommend that the planning commission take action based on the 16 findings and approve ordinance 2021 dash 23. And the third item on your agenda, and forgive me, I'm just going to flip my notes, is the PUD zoning and preliminary master plan and final master plan. They've submitted a combined master plan. It is PUD, or DRC case PUD 21 dash 00003, ordinance number 2021 dash 24, on the same property. Again, it has a low-density residential future land use designation, and they are proposing the residential PUD zoning designation in the city. It's compatible with the surrounding area and has no adverse impacts on city facilities. It meets the growth management strategic plan goal. And here's a brief look at the preliminary and final master plan that was included in your board package. This is just two different sheets of the larger plan set that you have received, and I know it's very tiny on your screen, but hopefully you saw it when you received it digitally. This is the southern half of the property, and this is the master plan sheets of that preliminary and final master plan set, which color codes each of the different land use types, and then they have a table at the top there that shows the open space tracks, the wetlands tracks, the stormwater tracks, and each individual different lot product. And again, this is the north half of the property. What's interesting here is that there is a large wetland bifurcating the property at the north end, an existing wetland that they're seeking to preserve, and the land north of that is not proposed to be developed. They've included a lot of language in the final master plan that provides flexibility for that area. The site just west of this is proposed to be a future high school site, so how that site gets access and whether or not any city facilities are proposed in the future on the north end of this property, they have left some language in their final plan that would allow for that flexibility in the future. So because that blue area north of the orange area is additional above and beyond what they're required to have for open space, they've provided some allowances for flexibility in the future, too, that may also benefit the city. Here's some zoning details of what is unique about the zoning classification that they're seeking. They have 284 dwelling units proposed. The gross density is 3.09 dwelling units per acre. The residential acres, gross residential acres, which is the area, once you take the roads out, it only leaves 74.68 acres, and the gross residential density is 3.80 dwelling units per acre. The actual lots within their 91.8 acre property is only 21.22 acres of the greater project site, and that density on those individual lots is 13.39 dwelling units per acre. And I'll get into kind of how that happened on the next slides. They are proposing some unique lot sizes, which our standard zoning allowances do not provide for, which typical lot size, the smallest lot size we have, is 62 and 1/2 feet wide. They're proposing 45-foot, 52-foot, and 62-foot wide lots, intermingled throughout the development, a minimum lot size of 4,725 square feet, and a living area, minimum living area of 1,500 square feet, and I actually think it's a little higher than that. They have building setbacks that are pretty reasonable, 25-foot front setback, which is standard, a five-foot rear setback, and a five-foot side setback, and a 10-foot side street setback. So those will be unique to this development. And their maximum building height is two stories, 35 feet in height. And then this slide will kind of tell you the story of how, why their lots are a little bit smaller because they have so much open space and wetland area within their project site. They're required to have 20% open space, which is a little over 18 acres, but they're providing almost 27% open space, and it's almost, it's a little over six acres extra of open space to be accessible to the community. The wetlands on the site are 10.43% of the total site. And there's something unique about this request. Typically, the building elevations in a final master plan set are just a graphic representation of what may show up. They're usually included so that we can understand what the footback footprint is, and we can design setbacks that will allow for that. But in this case, the applicants have requested that these elevations be included in the ordinance as sort of vested for coming to fruition as proposed. The city council is considering adopting residential architectural standards in the future, and their plans have not been designed because they're in draft form right now, so they haven't been able to design to code that does not yet exist. But we have presented those draft residential architectural standards to our city council, so we reviewed their building elevations against that draft code and recommended a couple of things out of that without changing their footprints entirely that would make their product a little bit better, and we're recommending that this board and the city council condition the approval on incorporating a few of those things, and I'll show you what those are now. So the building elevation conditions, these are not codified now, but because it's a PUD, you have the ability to recommend these conditions, is the non-monotony clause, which requires that adjacent homes when they're built are not all the same, right? And so that they disperse their different building designs throughout the community. The garages, we want to make sure that if the garage is more than 50% of the front facade, that they take steps to reduce the visual impact of that garage mass, and I think a couple of their elevations do have a garage that's more than 50% of the front facade. And the composition, the vertical material transitions occurring at inside corners or wrapping 18 inches around the outside of the corner, so if they're putting some type of stone facade on the front, that they continue to wrap that around the edges a little bit. And for windows and doors, we are recommending that some detail to trims and sills, shutters and awnings, framing of the facade materials, decorative shutters, and bay windows, or recessing the window also be incorporated. So we feel like these are minor tweaks that they could make with one final revision to their building elevations in the final master plan set, so that we can then rely on those and implement them and kind of vest them against a future residential architectural standard review. And that's a little complicated, so if you have questions, you can stop me on that. And then for the DRC staff recommendation, we're recommending approval with conditions of ordinance 2021 dash 24, and these are kind of lengthy. So right now, this project still is in DRC review with a few outstanding comments to satisfy. We've been working vigorously on this plan for several months, but with this board date looming, there are still a few things that we expect in a final submission of that plan. So we're asking that you all condition your approval, if you were to do so, on the plan being revised one more time to meet these conditions. And so we want to be very forthcoming with what is left to do. A lot of it is very minor and shouldn't be something that is inachievable, but we want to be sure that we have that in writing so that they can make those changes, hopefully, before we even make it to city council. That's our goal. So again, we're recommending approval with conditions with the changes to the building elevations within the final master plan set, including the non-monotony clause, the garage details, the composition, and windows and doors recommendations that I just showed on those prior slides, and then replying to and satisfying the outstanding DRC comments, including correcting the note on open space at the north end of the property. These are all minor details that are plan review kind of comments, and they're not big features, but adjusting some details on how the right of way is shown, distinguishing maintenance of the private areas, removing the wetlands designation of conservation on the plan, modifying the sheet index as recommended, confirming the layout of the amenity and clubhouse area, changing the title of the tree survey in the title block, and shifting a few trees on the landscape plans, incorporating the final density calculations, incorporating the final lot coverage and pervious surface calculations, and confirming the 10-foot perimeter buffer. And then there are a few things left to do with the transportation impact analysis, and I'll try and explain the transportation impact analysis review that is associated with this plan review. They are required to provide a transportation impact analysis, which we have reviewed as staff, that demonstrates where the project will distribute trips to, so that we can design their site appropriately. In future plan reviews, the subdivision construction plans, they will then respond to what the traffic impact analysis has shown and provide solutions. So right now, there's a couple of things that are still ongoing with that transportation impact analysis, that we need one final submittal of that, that we are recommending you all condition so that they will make those changes. And those are appropriately accounting for the not-yet-vested but anticipated trips and reevaluating the necessary improvements to mitigate the development impact and showing a potential connection to the west in the transportation impact analysis. They revise their plans to show a connection west potentially through that high school property to Nova Road, but their traffic study doesn't yet show that. And I know that they're working on that. I've seen a draft, but we need a formal submittal of that. So there's lots of things still kind of moving, which is fairly unusual. You guys are used to things with a nice tight bow on them, but we feel if you were to recommend these conditions, that we can satisfy most of them before we even make it to city council. So if you have any questions for me.
Just ask one question on behalf of the commission.
Is your mic on? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't hardly hear you.
Am I on? Can you hear me now?
No, I can't.
Okay, thank you. Is it all right if I ask Mr.?
Yep.
On behalf of the commission, on page 10 of 10 of this particular aspect of the report, the conditions that are requested are somewhat more general than what's in the PowerPoint here. The detail is staff and the applicant, they looking for an implementation if the commission's inclined to approve this zoning with the detail in these, in the presentation in the PowerPoint in addition to what's on the report, to that detail, as an acceptance of the conditions? Or is the language of the report in and of itself sufficient in the eyes of the staff to attach to the conditions you're seeking to get approved?
That's a great question. When we drafted the staff report, we had hoped to have a final submission of the master plan that would capture some of the things that I just had to list on that lengthy slide that were outstanding, like updating the sheet index. It's just something that has to happen, right? So we didn't put those conditions in the staff report because we had hoped that they would be resolved by now. They haven't been. We've seen drafts of things. We know they're forthcoming. We should have them in the next week, but we felt like the vagueness of those conditions in the staff report as written was not sufficient to ensure that they responded to every DRC comment that was still outstanding. So the answer to your question is what is on this slide is what we are recommending the conditions be.
Be included.
And hopefully, by the time we submit a staff report to the city council, most of those will not even, hopefully, there will be no conditions left.
Okay, just so that the commission understands that.
Yeah, I have a question for you now. If we were to approve this, can we make it subject to the verbal recommendations by staff? Because obviously, the written ones are not complete.
Well, the report is the tool that you're using to work your way through these issues. This presentation is part of the submission to the commission.
Okay, there you go.
Just to be clear for the commission, what Mr. Sturck is explaining is that there's more detail in this presentation, and this is the presentation and the conditions therein that staff would like to be included if the commission's to move forward with whatever conditions be adopted.
Yeah, I just don't want there to be a confusion between what we were presented in our pamphlet here and what was presented to us, so.
Sure. Well, the applicant has a copy of this presentation, I'm sure, so they are well aware of what the conditions are that are being proposed.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, and thank you for clarifying that. It's been a little tricky. We had hoped to have everything kind of buttoned up in time, and we still hope to have that done in time for city council. So if you guys could be very specific about what you're requesting, that would be helpful. We also have the applicants here. They have a presentation, and I understand they have a video as well, so hopefully, they can tell you a little bit more about what they're proposing. And then if you have any questions at the end for me about outlining any of these specific conditions or going back to those and talking about them with the applicant, then we can do that, too. And of course, you'll fit in public comment in there, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With the applicant, please step forward. Please state your name.
My name is Jim Pratt. I'm an attorney with Burr Foreman, 200 South Orange Avenue, 8th floor Orlando.
Thank you.
I am here representing the developer and the owner of the property. We appreciate Erin's presentation, and we appreciate her precision. I think that you noticed that several of those conditions were things that we should have corrected and didn't. They weren't substantive, and so we appreciate your willingness and Erin's willingness to indulge us tonight, to hear about Pine Grove Reserve and to discuss those outstanding conditions. We will give you a little bit more context that Erin has not provided. In 2019, a previous applicant applied to Osceola County for a preliminary subdivision plan approval for this property, and in July of 2020, the Orange County Commission approved that preliminary subdivision plan approval.
Osceola County.
Osceola County, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, we're going.
Thank you. I was afraid I was going to do that. A few months later, American Homes for Rent, the current owner purchased the property and met shortly afterwards with the staff for the city. And in the course of those conversations, the developer concluded that they were better served developing in the city than they would have been in the county. And that's the reason we're here today. In our meetings with staff, we were told that we could simply apply for annexation, that we would likely qualify, and the entitlements, the approvals that we had already obtained in Osceola County would converge over into the city of St. Cloud. And we're told that that advantage would be lost if we modified our plans. But reviewing the plans that Osceola County had reviewed, the developer concluded that they could enhance those plans. And so that's what you have before you today, is an enhanced set of plans. In the county's approval, as Erin pointed out, we were authorized to construct 315 homes on 45-foot lots, 52-foot lots, and three 104-foot lots. And then in addition, we had over 70 duplex lots and then over 20 side-entry garage lots. Those were the approvals that were given with Osceola County's preliminary site plan approval. As the developer considered that plan, they concluded that their purposes are better served by some enhancements that we believe are also enhancements for the city. The developer reduced the lot yield from 315 to 284, which is a reduction of almost 10%. We eliminated all of the duplex lots and replaced them, mixed them, as Erin said, among the 45, 52, and 62-foot lots. We also increased the lot sizes of the perimeter lots from 52 feet to 62 feet, and then we changed the three 104-foot lots and converted them to common areas for the benefit of the community. And so we've ended up with what we consider a better plan, but it's also made it necessary that we not only annex, but that we also seek the amendment to the land use that we apply for the rezoning and that we submit for the preliminary master plan and final master plan approvals. As I said, we've, well, this process has been a little complicated because, as you know, and I believe you've received information about this, that area is in transition. And in addition to the high school that Erin mentioned, there are two other projects planned that join our property. Those two are being processed through the county, is our understanding, and that's required coordination that would not normally have to occur on a project of this nature. And so that's made the process a little longer, that I believe the reason Erin was willing to consider it, to recommend us to you tonight, even with those outstanding conditions, because the conditions are not troublesome and the process has been lengthy because of the coordination. So we appreciate her, we appreciate your staff. We're grateful to you for giving us this chance to discuss the project. It will be a nice project for the city, and we'll have some unique aspects to it that our next speaker will address. I'll be here to answer questions, but I'm inviting Ben Shoemaker, who represents the developer, to speak to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I'm Ben Shoemaker. I usually write that on top of my pad. Always remember to say your name and your address, like, just that gets you started. I tell my kids to do the same thing. Ben Shoemaker, I am at 601 Brenmore Street in Orlando, Florida, 32804. It's difficult for me to remember because it's a house we're running. We sold our house in July, and I have to, it's 17 years was in the same house, so it doesn't roll off the tongue. Anyway, I'm the land acquisition manager for Central Florida for American Homes for Rent. And one of the things, if you'll indulge me, is besides talking about the plan and typical things we would talk about with the development plan and everything else, which we believe staff's reviewed, et cetera, gone through in detail, is I want to talk to you a little bit about single-family home for rent and American Homes for Rent specifically. If you... If you know all about it, let me know, but otherwise, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what we're doing and, and who we are. We have our first project in St. Cloud Airfield next to the high school that we're currently under construction, just plating right now, is going through that process, and this is our, our second project in St. Cloud. And I just want to tell you a little bit about the, the company and, and what we do. Let's see, first of all, I'm gonna put on my glasses so I can just see where the clicker thing is. Okay, so, so, single-family build for rent, you might have heard a lot about it. There's been a lot of talk in the news and everywhere else about it these days, or at least maybe you haven't heard about it, but if you have, have heard, and I think you've got some other projects coming in. Single-family build for rent is, is not really new. It's been driven lately, our company, American Homes for Rent, was formed in 2012, where they purchased about 30,000 to 40,000 houses in 2012 on, which were existing homes, et cetera, and to build up their inventory. Mr. Hughes, who was the founder of our company, originally founded Public Storage. You might have seen some of the public storage facilities. That was his first REIT. We're a publicly traded REIT, about a $13 billion market cap right now, so it's, it's a very large company. We have about 56, I, I think, I always have to be careful about the public information. I think we're reporting about 57,000 homes across the country. About four years ago, they decided where, instead of just buying homes on MLS or, you know, from builders, they'll buy builders that had homes to sell, et cetera, in their subdivisions, they decided that they wanted to set up a home building operation to take the things that they had learned about, I think if anybody's owned a rental home, you know, there's some challenges in, in having a home rental. They learned a lot of things about that and thought about developing their own communities and own housing product so that they could build and own homes that were durable, desirable, and efficient. And the idea being, I mean, it's, quite frankly, it's profit-driven, you know, less maintenance costs, people want to stay longer. I mean, that's how you make money on rental properties, kind of coming up with these products that people would want to stay in, live in, and everything else. So it was driven by, we've got up here this demand, so what's driving this demand is we, we've constantly seen, or at least they say that there's a lack of housing, so that's, that's part of the demand. But then, that one of the big drivers is in the second little area, you'll see the green is the millennials. So as you, you have this group of people that are coming into, a little bit later, we've all heard, if anybody has any kids that haven't moved out, I, I did for a while, is they're moving out of the household, this household formation, and moving into their prime years of homeownership, or single-family living, I should say, because not all of them are wanting to acquire or purchase homes. There's not just people that just can't afford homes, but this generation and a lot of others, and quite frankly, speaking for myself, moving into a rental for a while, it's nice to be able to call somebody to take care of your home and do those things. So it's not just an option that is, because I can't buy a home. About 60% of our, our renters actually do buy homes or plan on buying a home, but about 40% of them don't. So they find that across the board, that people actually desire to rent. Some of it's the flexibility in this new age, and certainly COVID changed a lot for us, but even before that point in time, we had a tremendous amount of people that just wanted to rent a home. If you can see in that third slide in the corner, the single-family rental homes, there's always been rental homes. There's about 16, 17 million. The institutional rentals right now only own about 2% of those homes. We own about 70,000. The big players probably own collectively maybe 300,000 or 400,000 homes across the country. So it's not a significant number of homes, because whenever we talk about 60, 62, 63% homeownership, that means it's about 39% rentals. So they've been around, and people rent homes, but it's been mainly moms and pops, right? I have a rental home that we're doing, everybody has one or two and all these things, and, and the same process of, that's happened with apartments back when there are fours and five-plexes, et cetera, is starting to happen in the single-family rental space. That's been a good thing, we think, you know, what it's done is it's provided efficiencies in home rental and everything else. We think we're doing a much better job of, of what we're gonna show, what we're gonna do in the future. The other thing that's interesting, I, I think, is in terms of stability in housing, if you look at that fourth slide, rental rates have been pretty steady. They kind of go up, they, the booms and busts of the housing industry haven't affected rental rates. They've turned up a lot lately. Personally, I think some of it's just because rents weren't raised for a long time, well, during COVID, at least for our company, we weren't raising rents or throwing people out of houses or even trying to evict them during that time. Some of it's good business, some of it's just, it was, it, you know, all the issues, but, but you can see, it's, it's kind of a steady business, and that's where we're at, and we think it's good and will, long-term, is, is a good investment. Our company, oh, sorry, I want to talk a little bit, the build-for-rent trend, it's really nothing new. If you look at the yellow line up there, that shows back in 2003, there are about the same number of built-for-rent, single-family rentals that were being built, as there are now. So about 49,000 houses across the country is the estimate in 2020 from this, from this study, is about 43,000 in 2006. It's about 10% of all rentals that are being built. So if you take multifamily at about 475,000, stuff like that, built-for-rent constitutes about 10% of that market. In addition, it's probably only about 4% of the single-family homes being built across the country. So it's not a huge thing, everybody, it, it sounds like a big thing. I know people will talk to me all the time about it. I worked for builders, I worked for D.R. Horton, KB of Richmond American, I've worked for numerous builders, and it seems to be the hot item, but it's really not that big a trend. We think that the build-to-rent is qualified in a number of different ways, but we are really building single-family homes and single-family communities. American Homes for Rent, I think I mentioned it before, those are the markets we're in. The stars indicate that we have about 15 markets where we're actually building homes. I don't think Columbus, Ohio is on there, but we're building in Columbus, Ohio. So this is where we're, we're building homes. We build in markets where we currently have inventory. So while we're new to the market, we own about 2,000 homes in Central Florida, and we've only built about 60 of them. So it's a new thing for us to be building homes in the market, but we're not new to the area. That's important because we have, what we are is a home rental company, so we have significant property management, resources, we know how to take care of our customer. I've kind of got this slide, you can see that's our truck. We do full service. They've thought through everything from all of our eight, our techs are AC certified, so they can come out to the house and fix an AC issue without waiting around for somebody to come in there. I know when I was working on the home building side, there was always kind of an issue. It would've been nice to have one of our guys run and fix it. The picture on that is an amenity center that we have built. We build really good amenities for long-term because we intend to hold the communities and be in there for a long time. We're a little different, we think significantly different than a lot of the other build-to-rent product. So even some of the national home builders that are building built-to-rent product intend to sell it off to investor groups. We don't. We build for us. We're gonna own these products, we're gonna have these products for 20 years. So our perspective to it is different. Our perspective is like a homeowner who's buying a house. We're gonna own it, we're gonna live in it. The difference is, we have to maintain it every day. It's, it's our property to maintain. We maintain the properties inside, we maintain the properties outside. We do all the lawn service, we do fenced yards, we do full service for everybody involved. Utilities are actually charged as part of their bill, so we always have the utilities on, so there's nobody, you know, can turn off their, their yard, their maintenance. We're actually moving to a system where all of the lawn controllers will be controlled by a central system, so we can control the irrigation. So the idea is to run it so it's taken care of, and the homeowner, excuse me, our, our tenant slash customer doesn't really have to do anything. So we, we are not horizontal apartments. These aren't little houses. These are real houses on regular lots. We don't plot them differently. We plot the houses one day, and they may be sold, but not anytime soon. But it's all plotted and all treated like single-family. You can see our communities, they're gonna look like any single-family community, and it offers an opportunity for some people that can't or don't want to, to get into a single-family neighborhood. You'll see people in neighborhoods, they decorate their houses, they treat it like their house, they'll stay in there. Our average length of stay is over three years. People stay in our houses, and we don't even really know how long, because our experience, we've got 91 communities in the new home, how long their house is gonna stay. So we focus on that. The finishes, we're not trying to do builder basics, we're doing something that we want because we want to rent it year after year. We want to be efficient in expenses because we want to be able to keep the rents under control, and we make money that way, quite frankly, I mean, but we want to make it nice so it's taken care of and people can take care of it. We do things like LED flush mount lights, so they're easily changeable. We use the same tile in the bathrooms that we do in the kitchens. We do use soft closed doors on the cabin, all kinds of little things that I'm always amazed at, as just a simple land guy, how much thought they've given to the product. So I'd like to show you, indulge you in just a short little video, and, because we have built one project that's complete here, it's a smaller product, project up in Apopka, Zarebrook, and it kind of can show you that some of the houses, this is only about 16 lots, and it'll also show you what the interiors look like, what we're doing today. Oh, it's got the music, too. This is right across from Apopka High School. That entrance goes into the high school the other side. It's by Arrows State, so if you've ever been up there. Thank you. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the proposed plan. When we looked at the plan, that we're looking at buying the property, there's a couple things that we didn't like. We, we don't like to build duplexes, we like typical single-family, so those are some of the things we changed. We also wanted the opportunity to have some larger lots. Parking is an issue for us when we think about what we're building. A lot of our product would be 30 feet wide on 45-foot lots, gives us more parking in the roads, et cetera. And next, oh, sorry, looking at the site plan, so a lot of that was what drove the changes in, in our lot matrix and how we work through the product by giving up some of the density. We also needed to have sufficient size for our amenity center and some areas around there, that's why we eliminated the larger lots along that one property line. We go through and we've actually, we, we, we plan all of our lots. You know, there's still some subject to changes, some of the lots move around, but we lay it all out from the time that we buy the product to what we're doing, so we know how it's gonna mix. So as far as some of these architectural guidelines, I don't know that we had seen all the recommendations on those yet, but we certainly agree with switching up the matrix, and we'll certainly consider those and look at them, but we lay out the whole community anyway. So it's not, it's not a problem for us to figure out who's across from the road, we don't want to repeat lots, we don't want to repeat elevations, et cetera, because we want a good-looking community the same way. So this is kind of subject to change, but as you can see, we go through and we actually know what we're gonna build and where we're gonna build it. The majority of our houses are a four-bedroom, that's the typical, although we have seen more people looking for fives these days. Obviously, with working from home, et cetera, the fifth bedroom is functioned as an office. We put in pocket offices and other stuff as we've adjusted our product. So these are the plans that she was showing you, at least. So, you know, we have three nice elevations, a lot of it's driven by Southern architecture because our architects are up in Atlanta, a little bit more of that style. A lot of two-stories because we find it's a family buyer typically. We, we don't do a ton of ranches. We have some, but it's more focused on two-story homes. It's the Bryce Canyon, it's our smallest plan, but it's 1,700 square feet, it's a 3-2, functions very nicely. It's a brand-new plan that we came out with after they worked through it. Fillmore is one of our ranch plans. Let's click through them, they're all being there. The Roosevelt is a 2,377, 5-3, so that's our biggest, that's our five-story, five-bedroom, excuse me. There's a couple other plans, I just, that's the flavor of it, and we'll, we'll obviously, because of the architectural changes, it's extremely important to us that we know what we're building because we're gonna lay them all out, and that's, it's important to us. We build significant amenities. I think the first amenity that we're doing at Sky Lakes is, is a tier four, that's our, it's probably about a $2 million amenity. This one is a tier five, will be our first one. You can see that's what the, the clubhouse facility will look like. When I say it's clubhouse, it's exercise, it's workspace. We have inside, you can see the, the layout of this space. It's, it's not just manned, it's the exercise facilities and everything else. If you rent a house, you don't have to buy a gym membership, you know? So a lot of the same facilities you might see in a, an apartment-type complex, except ours, quite frankly, we think are a little nicer and a little bigger, but that's probably a little, you know, biased. This is, these are pictures that have been rendered for the facility, so you can see, I mean, all down to the finishes, everything's being designed, this facility is being, currently constructed up in Atlanta, so they've gone through that point, and we will be building this facility here. The windows, the gathering areas, some office space. These are not just office space for the, this is for residents to come in and be able to work, you know, kind of the flex spaces that people want to get together and gather in today after the pandemic. Here's a kitchen area that they have, and another open space that's there, the, kind of the lobby area that you've got, just lots of pictures of that. And I just, I don't want you to think this is a pipe dream, so I wanted to show you a recently completed amenity that we did with our Tampa division in Plant City. This was a tier four amenity, one of the first ones. That's a picture of the community. Couple things I want you to note, besides the beautiful Olympic pool, I pushed for a splash pad, but, you know, that's, that's what they have. You can see the houses being under construction. So often, if I work for a builder, we start the amenity at a certain point when we have a certain number of houses built, right? It, it's the opposite here. This amenity was going up before the first house was built. So we're putting in our amenities because we need to service residents from day one as much as possible. We're doing that. You know, a lot of builders, like, I don't know if you've ever run into it, but it's like, well, it never got built down the road, you said you were gonna build it, et cetera. That's not what we do. And as I pointed out, this is a beautiful amenity, it's fully functioning in, in Plant City today. One of the last things I wanted to share with you, and I've shared too much, I, I really appreciate your time, I hope everybody's eating. I found, I came across, I was looking at some housing studies, always looking at different things, and I came across a study from 2016, which was a housing study done with Osceola County and, and St. Cloud. And there was a paragraph in it, and it was talking about, and the numbers are dated, the housing numbers are dated, and the rentals, everything is dated. But I thought what was really interesting is, is the last line. The idea was that St. Cloud and Osceola in particular, but St. Cloud in particular, was having some affordability challenges in terms of some of their affordable rental housing, which was caused, I, I thought interestingly enough, because there wasn't some higher rentals. So you had people that would have sought higher rentals, were actually moving down to take rentals and squeezing the lower space. And I, I point that out, and the line is, and for, at least from this report, is consequently, we've seen lower wage earners renting up to unaffordable units when higher wage earners rent down because more expensive rentals are lacking. We are not taking housing out of the market, we're providing housing in the market, and we're providing rentals that people desire. People are renting them today in these markets, and we're providing another end, another avenue for, for a home, a single-family home experience that they have. And I think it's kind of interesting that by providing maybe a little bit higher housing, that you might be providing a little bit of lower housing in terms of freeing up some of the pressures on those markets. So I don't know if all the numbers are right from 2016, but I'd never thought about it that way, quite frankly, and since I was looking at it, I figured I'd bring it up. So be happy to take any questions. We have our engineer here, Bob Pamish, with PE Group, has been working on this so hard and tirelessly with Erin. We thank staff once again, it's, we do have some questions we're working through. I think there's a transportation meeting with Osceola County on Thursday, we're still doing it. We've been meeting with the school board on connection points with them, so we're trying to put it all together and work with all of our neighbors, including both of the owners, and with that, I, I've talked too much, my wife would tell me that already, so.
Since you brought the subject up, what's the price range for these rentals?
So our, our price range is, we'll probably be between $1,950 and $2,400 is where we would price our rentals today.
Now, say for instance, you cannot rent for that price, will you be selling the units? units, or will you just reduce the rent?
We would find the right rental price. We're a REIT, so we can only own income-producing properties, we can't sell properties that are profit, create some tax problems with being a REIT, we can only own properties for rental. If we buy property and I'm, okay, so I actually was an accountant and understand tax, I don't understand REIT accounting, but I do know this, that, you know, if we intend to sell property, we have to put it in a different entity, there's a taxable entity, there's all kinds of things like that. We do not intend to sell the homes. We have been in our, since 2012, we've been over 90% occupied in our property. The numbers on the new homes have been closer to 98. That's not pandemic-related, that's just since we rolled out new product. That's how well it's accepted it's been. In Orlando market right now, we're 99.5% leased. Okay, that's, that's because of the market, right? But what I say, you know, the 90 is across the board, and, you know, 95, and then we rent what the market gives us, and we try to build product that we know will work, but we have seen the desirability of our product exceed our desirability for existing product because of the.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Orlando, to charge $2,500 a month rent, that's probably not an issue.
Yeah.
But St. Cloud, yeah, it probably would be.
Well, and that's, that's the top end of the five-bedroom, but I can tell you that right now, there are properties renting, I know in R, et cetera, that are renting for much higher than that in the area, including down, we look at all the rentals, but current rental rates are higher than.
Yeah, they are high, yeah.
And we're, we're going to be in the middle of rental rates. There's other property, if you look at like an Invitation Homes or Progress Homes on their websites, you'll see that they're much higher than what we'll rent at. So we try to keep it so we can keep the tenant, it's more important.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, just my question would be, you, is this intended to answer the lower-income renter?
No, no, we're not, we're not in the, in the mode, most of our tenants are, you know, either in transition, they might be moving into the area, in fact, I say most. During the pandemic, we've seen a ton of people who move into the area that want to rent a home. They don't know where they want to live, we try to find desirable school locations, that's why the desirability of long-term having a high school next door is important to us. But people who've been coming in here are just looking for a place to live. Yeah, I had to move out in three days and try to find a house, it was incredibly difficult. That's pandemic-related, all right? But we do see migration to the areas we're moving, that people want to move in. We're not providing lowering housing, that's why I thought this was interesting. We're providing and filling a need for people who want to rent, that maybe could afford to buy but don't want to, or just don't want homeownership anymore. So, you know, the ebbs and flows of pricing and taking care of it, and your roof goes bad, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff to do, and all of that's included in what we do.
Anybody else?
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
What's the minimum amount of time that a person can rent for?
The minimum lease term is always a year.
Okay.
We don't do any short-term rentals, it's always one year under the lease. We don't, I think for purposes, they don't go beyond one year on leasing, some places we're not doing longer-term leases. Our average tenant, say, the credit score, excuse me, the average median income for our tenants across the country, so, you know, it's blended, I can just give you that, because I think it's, it's about $110,000 is the average median income. The average credit score is in the 660 range for our tenants, we check their credit score, et cetera. We target families, we target, I mean, anybody can rent from us, we're open to everybody else, but the product's designed to support families, that's why we have the fenced yard so they can have kids in the backyard, dogs, et cetera.
I have another question. Transportation analysis that has to be done, how can we determine the number of homes that are logical for that area without the transportation analysis being complete?
Well, the transportation analysis was done, we had submitted it, and then there were some comments, and we've just recently resubmitted it. Part of the challenge, it clearly generates what our project would generate by itself, what we've been asked to do is to try to figure out how potential connection points to the school board, site improvements with Pine Grove Road, the off-site stuff, where the traffic's going to go would affect it. I think we have, we've identified, and I think Aaron would do it, we have, we've identified the trips that are going to be coming out of subdivision. The question is, where are they going to go so we can determine what's best to do on Pine Grove, what's best to do on the potential network connector road or the, to the north, and what's best to do through the school site if there's going to be a local connector road? So we did do a traffic study quite some time ago and just got revised per comments. Sure, I'd love that.
So again, the, the purpose of the traffic study at this level is just to ensure that the plan for the number of units proposed distributes the traffic and shows the entrances and the number of access points in a reasonable way. And something that shook out of having that traffic study at this level was that we showed that putting all of those trips onto Pine Grove Road might be an issue, and how would we deal with that? Would we fix a DOT state road that they weren't prepared to do with money we don't yet have programmed? Or would we include an additional entrance connecting through the school board property? And that's what we've been coordinating on to ensure that some of the trips get distributed over to Nova Road, which already has an intersection programmed, a signalized intersection programmed, and they're already assessing that. So by the time the units hit the ground, if you were to approve this plan, their timeline's around 2024, that's around the time that Nova Road intersection will be completed, and then the trip distribution that this final master plan demonstrates would, would alleviate some of the concerns that we would have.
And the school board would approve that?
They are coordinating heavily, and actually, they're benefiting tremendously from this project being so collaborative. This project may actually use the mobility fees that they're paying into our system to construct a road through the school board property that the school board would then not have to build. So there's a lot of that stuff that we've been working on behind the scenes, but the actual solutions to the impact that the traffic study has analyzed come in, not at this phase. So we get the study that shows us where we need to distribute trips to, and then we solve the concerns at the subdivision construction plan phase, which actually shows roadway improvements and things that aren't within the subdivision itself. So that's why having things that are evolving within the traffic study is, it's kind of a, I don't want to say normal, but it's a part of the process in that, you know, we needed to have the study now to know where to build the entrances, and then we deal with how to construct the roadways to support the traffic at the next step.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, just the utilities, impact on our utilities and all, can you address that? I'm not quite sure what I mean by that, but clearly, there's a lot that's going to be added in, and with the issues that we have in our city, so can.
Great question. On the cover sheet of the plan set, for all of the impacts, we have level of service standards. So projects, when they produce an impact, we can quantify what that impact is, excuse me, I guess I could take this off, you can hear me better. We can quantify what that impact would be based on a normal, each house uses this many gallons per day of water, produces this many trips on the road, sends this, needs this many acres of parks, and all of that is what the impact fees are designed to mitigate. But this plan on the cover sheet includes an estimate of what that impact would be, which the utilities department has reviewed, and they have found that we have sufficient capacity of parks, utilities, and hopefully, we're getting there with the roadways to support the proposed development. Does that make sense? They know they have that many, we know we have this many, this many homes produces this many gallons of water per day of need, and then they have reviewed that need to confirm that we have that capacity to serve the.
And that won't be something that renters are included in their rent, that would be something they would be paying on their own so that that way, it's not a, like you said, a lot of the things were being taken care of, the roof, maybe the irrigation, all of that, so I'm just thinking about renters and utilization of those items.
It's all included in their rent, they, you know.
I'm not sure of that, Ben can speak to that, but just to clarify, as far as the zoning approval itself for this lot product, these are fee simple lots, and so that's why my presentation didn't go into the fact that these are rental homes, because there's nothing about the plat that's going to define that they have to be continued to be maintained by this rental agency. So if they, you know, end up upside down and they want to vacate the area, these home sites are still available and fee simple and can be sold individually in the future, and there's no conditions in this plan that would prevent that from being able to happen. But how they pay their water bill is.
So I would call up our engineer, but he'll just confuse everybody with the utilities part. So to your first question, we've been really coordinating with the other subdivisions. So the water and stuff over on Nova Road, the water sewer and stuff is coming across big trunk lines, and it's all going to be coming through. We actually have coordinated with the subdivision to the left to create just one lift station, and our water and lift station will actually service the bus station site for the school board, so we're putting that in, they're coordinating with that, so we've been going through all that. System gets all looped through the other subdivisions, so as far as the actual infrastructure, that's all been being worked out and, and controlled. So what we do on utilities is all utilities are paid through a provider we have, and the tenants then pay that to the provider, whatever it is. So that way, we ensure that utilities get paid. If they didn't pay their utilities, we don't want water off, we don't want electric off if somebody abandons a site, et cetera, then it would still be on, be on us, but we wouldn't have to go and check and turn the lights back on. So they do pay their water and sewer just like everybody else. They don't have to pay any HOA fees, they don't pay any property taxes, they don't pay anything to use any facilities we provide, all of that's included within their rent. So I hope that clarifies.
As much as I can, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know, if we're all going solar, are you going to go solar so it helps out, like, put a fill out there so your electricity's even cut less?
Super, super interesting question. I just, that, no, I will tell you, two things have happened. So that amenity I showed you that they built in Plant City, we got the call from, we got the call from Out Las Vegas, which is one of our corporate offices, and they said, we want you to put solar on the roof to run the facility. They're looking for ways to do that. We're actually looking at doing Wi-Fi systems within our communities so that that would be included for all the residents with doing that. But they asked me to go out and look at solar streetlights, for instance, can you find solar streetlights, what can we do with that? So, you know, it's, it's an evolving process as we have just got into these communities, but it's all about reducing long-term costs for the tenant and for us. So those are things we're looking at. We're retrofitting that building now at a cost of about $100,000 to put solar on that roof out there. That is not something that Mr. Horton ever called me when I was at DR and said, add some solar, so it's, it's a different perspective.
So you're talking about the solar on the, on the community house, not on all the.
No, we're just starting with that. My, my point being is we just put this in, and that's how fast it's evolving. So they put me on the road, I've been calling up these guys up in, I think they were up in, somewhere up in Canada finding about solar streetlights. We buy our streetlights because we don't like to lease them and pay the fees, so everything we do, we buy, so if we can get solar streetlights so we're not paying, you know, we can maintain them. I imagine the next steps they're looking at is whether solar makes sense on the houses. So we're not there yet.
Call Disney. I'm serious, they have over 100 acres just in solar to do their.
I, I, they have a lot, and it makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
So, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I just wanted to make one other point, and Aaron and Ben have both highlighted the fact that all of the, the growth in that area have presented some of the challenges. Aaron explained to you about the 15 acres that are being set aside at the north end of our property, and that our commitment is to make that available for, for your purposes. And in particular, we're aware that since the school district does not know yet what alignment they'll have for that road along the northern end, they may need more than just the north 90 feet or north 100 feet. And so we're anticipating that, so that they can design what they need, that portion of our property can be used for that purpose. And that's a part of the commitment that we've made to, to, to the city, and frankly, to the, the school district as well.
Okay, thank you. Everybody satisfied? No more questions? If we don't. No, nothing? Do we have anybody in the audience that has any questions, if you'd like to step forward? No?
Call for public comment.
Public comment, yeah. Nobody here? Okay, we'll close this section, then. Do anybody else have on, on the board have any questions?
If I could, ma'am, I don't want to interrupt the discussion, I just want to remind the commission that when you're ready to move forward on these, you'll take these in items A, B, and C in that order, the annexation, and then the land use, and finally, the zoning.
We will, thank you. So first case was the annex, the, hold on a second. The annexation, 00004/2021-21, do we have a motion on that? And, yeah, do we have a motion on that?
I'd like to make the motion to recommend approval ordinance number Annex 2100042021-21, based on 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. The next one would be the future land use map amendment, DRC case number CPA21-00008/2021-23. Do we have a motion on that? Future land use map amendment.
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-23, DRC case CPA21-00008, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Okay, do we have a second?
Let me second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion passes, 5-0.
And I pulled up for your, because of the complexity of the conditions that we've asked for, I pulled those up on the screen.
Yeah.
If the attorney can possibly advise on the best way to summarize these, or if they need to read every single one into the record.
Well, I think, as I was thinking about that, as you were making your final comments, it occurs to me that prior to going through this, that the conditions that are contained within the PowerPoint, which as I understand is what the staff is recommending be adopted, be reviewed within the PowerPoint. That would both afford you all to see them specified, that affords the applicant to see what's being presented via staff. If there's anything that needs to be discussed or addressed during that, you can pull that off and then, and then move forward.
Okay, so I'll just read through them once more based on your advice.
Do you want me to?
Well, someone should motion something first, possibly.
I need to point out the case number first.
Well, what, yeah, you'll call the case, and then you can open up the, the public section so that the staff can make their presentation, just for the basic, for the basis of summarizing the conditions that the staff wishes for the commission to consider in connection with this case.
Okay. This next case would be the PUD Land Unit Development Zoning Map Amendment, and that would be case PUD21-00003/2021-21. and that would be case PUD twenty-one dash zero 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 three slash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Thank you. And the recommendation is for approval with conditions for that ordinance. They are to make the recommended changes to the building elevations within the final master plan plan set that you have in front of you, including the non-monotony clause, the garage details, the composition, and the windows and doors recommendations that are included in your staff report. And the second condition is to reply to and satisfy the outstanding DRC comments, including the note on the open space, the future right-of-way, distinguishing the private maintenance responsibilities, removing the wetlands designation of conservation, modifying the sheet indexes recommended, confirming the layout of the amenity and clubhouse area, changing the title of the tree survey in the title block, shifting a few trees within the, within one single lot on the landscape plans, incorporating the final density calculations, incorporating the final lot coverage and impervious surface calculations, and confirming the ten-foot perimeter buffer. And then the final recommendation is for modifications to the traffic impact analysis and appropriately counting for the not-yet vested trips and reevaluating necessary improvements to mitigate the development's impact and showing the potential connection to the west to Nova Road in the traffic study and to evaluate the trip distribution that was a result. Again, staff has seen drafts of many of these changes. We just need a formal submission, and we hope to have that clarified by.
Okay, thank you. So anybody have a motion?
I would just recommend, because those were reviewed, that the applicant be afforded, if they, if they wish to address anything, that you give them that chance before you take it under.
Was this all covered, or do you have to add anything?
Just for, so that the record's clear, that the applicant had an opportunity to respond to the conditions being recommended by staff.
We have not yet seen the architectural tweaks, and I think that that would be our primary concern, having an opportunity to take a look at those and, and envision from our perspective how we would implement them.
Well, I appreciate that. I think, I think the way that the condition was phrased in the report, I would just suggest to the commission, is fairly still broad in terms of how that's going to be addressed between staff and the applicant. So I don't know that, that, I don't know that the spirit of the, of the issue would be compromised by the commission incorporating a condition that the elevations will be a further point of analysis going forward as a part of their adoption of the.
And that, that perspective, we're good with. We've not seen what was recommended, so we don't know how much detail is included. But if the recommendation is fairly general, then, then I think that, that, that going forward with it is the proper approach.
If, the language that's contained in the report, which was also in the, in the presentation, is with regard to elevations, the building elevations included in the plan set be revised to incorporate some of the draft residential architectural standards as described above or as refined prior to adoption of the PUD zoning and approval of the associated preliminary final master plan.
That sounds good.
Now, you will have that for the city council meeting, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
You will have all that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, now, do we have a motion? And then make sure you make it subject to staff's recommendations.
And I would just clarify that if, if, what, if the motion's going to contemplate the conditions in whichever direction, that you specifically contemplate the conditions as specified in staff's PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, okay.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, DCRK, DRC case PUD twenty-one dash zero 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 three, based on sixteen findings in the land development code, including the part, the revisions from the PowerPoint that was presented to us.
Recommending the conditions be incorporated.
That were presented to us on the PowerPoint.
From the PowerPoint, yes, sir.
By staff.
By staff.
By staff.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four.
Four to one. Four to one approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then our next meeting will be November sixteenth at six PM at this same location.
Okay, really good.
Is, ma'am chair, if I could, just before we adjourn, was there something, I, I, I heard from the clerk that there was maybe a, a discussion or someone wanted to bring up a point to the commission about procedurally? So I, this might be the time to have that open discussion.
That would be me, sir. I would like to know, what does it take to have a police officer here when the meetings are going on, and a blessing?
Well, well, in terms of having an officer here at the meeting, that'll be something that we can, I'll relay to city attorney manzares to discuss with city manager. I don't know what the resources are for that, but I'll make sure that that feedback is forwarded. And with regard to, I'm sorry, what was the other item?
A prayer or a blessing?
City council has it?
The city, yeah, they have both. Thank you.
I, I would leave that to the discretion of the commission.
I'm sorry?
The pleasure of the commission, you all.
Between us. Are you for it?
You could, everybody talk on the microphone.
Okay.
Please all say yes or no.
All in favor of a prayer?
If you want to call for a motion for that, Ms. Carney, then you can get.
I call for a motion to have a blessing, a prayer, or devotion, whatever, which way you want to call it.
I'll second that motion.
This is before the beginning of the meetings?
Yes, sir.
Going forward, okay. And that's been seconded by Mr. O'Clonan.
Before the pledge or after?
No, after the pledge.
After the pledge, okay. All in favor?
You call for a discussion, okay.
Who would be in charge of the invocation?
She is. She brought it up.
We could, we could take turns. We could all take turns.
We can all pick a preacher every month or something, or ask the city council who has it, because if you go to their council meetings, they're always there. The police are there, and some preacher is there, or a clergyman or whatever, who knows how to bless it.
Okay.
My discussion would just be that there is a lot of coordination that goes into that. And I do, I prefer not to put a lot of extra work on people. I think a moment of silence, reverent silence after the pledge would be my strong recommendation of how we would say that. That would be open to everybody's own interpretation. And then I also would just say that the other item about having a police officer, again, as long as it's not going to be undue cost and issues to add to, we don't need more cost added to our city at any point in time. So that would be my, my two thoughts for that.
Well, I don't know. We're already working for free, so.
Well, good, and we should keep doing that. It's our good American right to do that. So that would be my only recommendation, is to change it to have that after the pledge of the flag, that we would definitely have a moment of reverent silence and/or a prayer, if somebody is so inclined.
Well, you made a motion to have a prayer. Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
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 Now, you said a silence.
No, I just was just trying to amend that a little bit so that, that it would be if somebody wasn't prepared, we, we weren't on the spot. It was just that one of the others, so that is fine.
We could do is if we call for the, for the prayer, and whoever.
Absolutely.
Does not want to can stay seated and have a moment of silence.
Exactly.
Okay. We should give them the option. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Everybody good? Okay.
Thank you. Five zero.
This meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Claudia. Hit it, the gavel. Hit the gavel.